Jones County Board of Supervisors has denied lawful session with the Honorable Let's pray. And to all of us up here, just want to thank for the love that they would just ask you to be with us as we go through this meeting. That we do things in your will and our accord order. Just ask you to be with everyone that's lost loved ones, loving hospitals sick, just wrap your arm around it comfortably. In all things that we do, ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Salute.
Praise be to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What crisis help them I said, so I don't like them.
Do we have any addendums to the agenda?
Alright, um, I heard consent, as there's items on the client's docket. They have a bond payment that needs to be added on that three car base. Let's see if they have. Um, there's a deal from the tax recorder for postage. That's you've gotten that from mail out. In relation to the back sales. Um, and then American Graphics sent a invoice late Friday for the signs promoting having this waste day. That's gonna be, that's coming out of that $2,000 that we got from the landfill. Those are the three planes that have. Um, there's a status form that needs to be added for the tax office. The terminations that come in your honor. And under county engineer, uh, on page two, this is number nine, under E, uh, we could add CDVG discussions. Jessica has some things to present to the board as far as that project goes. Take that all right. Oh, sorry. Okay, so on page one, beat thirty, has, um, number four, under item, we could add, uh, letter B, under item number four, beat thirty, this is a write entry agreement.
Any more addendums to the agenda? If not, any motion to approve those addendums?
Approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Any motion to approve the agenda?
Approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not all in favor?
Aye.
Any motion to approve the minutes, March the third and the seventeenth?
Approve.
Second? Any discussion? If not all in favor?
Aye.
On unfinished business, we got beat for Quail Creek subdivision plant.
Mr. Brand, you're going on here this morning, right? Okay, um, so you have revised the plat based on the engineer's recommendations. We've been talking with Mr. Brand and the other developers of the subdivision, which is in beat four. My recommendation to the board is to acknowledge the plat. And we're gonna file something in addition in the Chancery Clerk's office, letting the public and any attorneys that are doing work, title work related to the subdivision, know that the roads are not public yet. That way, they don't buy a piece of property thinking that the roads are public. But his intention is to pave soon, and once he gets them paved, he'll come back. And an engineer will go out and inspect the roads again. And then hopefully the road can be adopted as public.
Yes, ma'am. I need a motion to approve the Quail Creek subdivision plant.
I'm like motion to approve this addition, Ben Hill can put in.
Alright. Second? Second? Any more discussion? If not all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Next, we have a kratom ordinance in Jones County. Mrs. Wallack and Gist. We're gonna give, we're gonna try to keep you to a mound, Ms. Wallack, because we got so many people in here.
Yes, sir. President Dixon, our board members, I appreciate all of you giving me the opportunity to speak again on this. I did wanna give you a quick legislative update, because as you know, last time I was here, I mentioned that I was working with Coalition to try to get something done at this stage. That Coalition consisted of the Mississippi State Medical Association, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Mississippi Osteopathic Medical Association, the Psychiatric Association, the Mississippi Ecology Association, Mississippi Municipal League, the Mississippi Association of Chiefs of Police, the Mississippi Law Enforcement Association, Mississippi Sheriff's Association, and State Troopers Association, along with the Advisory Board that myself sits on, which is the State Advisory Board for Treatment Courts in the state of Mississippi. Um, we had several bills addressing kratom that were in committee. Um, a few did make it out of committee and onto the calendar for vote, but it was on the hill of the calendar. And a lot of controversial issues are pushed to the hill of the calendar and did not get voted on. One bill remained alive, and it ended up getting pushed to conference, which is basically a situation where the Speaker of the House and the Lieutenant Governor, appointed three members each to be on that conference committee. And they essentially debate the issue until they can reach a compromise or the bill dies in conference. That bill did, um, reach a compromise. Unfortunately, it was not what the Coalition was asking for, but it did and will prohibit the sale of kratom to anyone under the age of 21 in the state of Mississippi. Most importantly, though, it did, and we fought for this. It did, it will contain language in this bill that allows the municipalities and the counties to keep in existence any existing bans on kratom within their counties and their cities. And it also protects the municipalities and the counties to enact any future bans on kratom within their counties and within their cities, which I think is extremely important. And that was, that was a sticking point that we all agreed that that had to stay in there because we want our counties and our cities to be able to continue to protect the citizens of our counties and our cities in getting this stuff banned. Um, as I've stated before, and I know that there are some supporters here today that you will hear from them, that it helps with their pain, or that it got them off of opioids. I don't deny that. I'm sure it does help with their pain, and I'm sure it did help them get off opioids because kratom is essentially an opioid. It binds on the opioid receptors in the brain, therefore it has its same, uh, the same power than an opioid has. It is, in my opinion, and the opinion of all of the members of this Coalition, that something that can bind the opioid receptors in the brain and can give you the same relief that a powerful opioid can, has no business being sold in gas stations or within vape shops. You, I'm not, uh, I'm not advocating that someone should not have relief from their pain. What I'm advocating is that our citizens should be safe in doing so. Going to a gas station or going to a vape shop and obtaining something that gives you the same relief as an opioid is not safe management of their pain. There are other already documented ways to address those issues. If they have a legitimate pain issue, then they should be monitored by a doctor who can, who can make sure that they are not becoming addicted to it and that they are not, um, putting themselves in danger. I'm disappointed, to say the least, in the state and not going further and protecting the citizens of the state. I am glad that now it cannot be sold to anyone under the age of 21. However, that does not protect the adult citizens of this state. I provided you with a copy of a report from the Mississippi Bureau of Narcotics. This, they were, uh, kind enough to provide the Coalition with this report. This shows that since 2017, 104 adult citizens all over the age of 21 died with coroner corpse and autopsies to prove evidence that kratom was involved in their death. One citizen of this state passing away from the use of kratom is one too many. But 104 citizens in this state since 2017 strongly suggest, and, um, is evidence of why the Coalition is in so, uh, so much opposition to this stuff being sold and so easily accessible in gas stations and vape shops within our county. We, I believe, have an obligation, I do this every day of my life. I've tried to protect the citizens of this, of this county who are sitting me under felony indictments. But I also care about the rest of the citizens of this county. And I would strongly encourage you to finally go ahead and follow suit with the city of Laurel and pass this ordinance today. I do have two guests that I would like you to hear from who have personal, um, accounts of how this product has affected them and their families. First, I would like to introduce to you Samuel Fletcher. He is a senior in high school at
West Jones.
West Jones. His mother cannot be here today because she is a teacher in our county, but he is here to represent her.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Samuel Fletcher, and I'd like to express my gratitude for the time given you today to speak only after my uncle died. After a lifetime battle with addiction, Matt was found dead in his bed on the afternoon of July 4th, 2024, at the age of 52. Matt battled almost every drug and completed rehab at least four times, defeating each addiction that he suffered from. After a heartbreaking divorce, Matt found something called kratom sold in a small bottle at local gas stations around the county. His life immediately changed as it numbed his emotional pain as well as his back pain. This new habit was immensely costly for him, and he ended up losing his lake house at Lake Edens, his, uh, brand pickup, um, another truck he had, um, and then another car he had. He lost his job, and he lost most all of his earthly possessions. Matt was forced to live with his elderly mother, and he began to lie, steal, and pawn her possessions as well. After Matt's death, we discovered paperwork revealing that he was borrowing money from various loan companies and not paying them back. We also retrieved, uh, my grandmother's, uh, prized jewelry, Matt's laptop, and sunglasses that he was planning to sell, but unfortunately her guns and personal computer had already been sold. Hidden in a bag in his room was other sentimental items that he was days from having, which included his mom's wedding ring, which he lied to her and made her believe that she had lost. My name, my grandma, was taken advantage of due to her mental state. And after Matt's death, she was taught how to download her banking app so she could monitor her finances, only to discover that close to $60 every day was spent at various gas stations across the county, all for kratom. She was three months behind on all her utilities, and her table had been cut off. She was being sued by different credit card companies because Matt was using credit cards in her name to fuel his addiction. Matt was once Citizen of the Year for Jones County in 2007, with the peak of his career falling during an aftermath of Hurricane Katrina. During his last year of life, he presented with massive weight loss, severe anxiety, memory deficits, depression, extreme mood changes, paranoia, excessive crying spells, and sleepiness. Matt took our family's coin collection passed down from my grandfather and spent it at a gas station like it was spare change to purchase kratom. This coin collection was in my name and was given to me when, um, when my grandmother passed away. He apologized to me, and, you know, we made up, but he admitted to me that, um, he would do anything to get his hands on this stuff, including steal, including stealing from his nephew. After he died, uh, we searched through the property. We found bottles of kratom hidden everywhere. And even almost a year afterwards, we still find bottles around the yard and in random places. There were about hundreds, if not thousands. When alive, he admitted his love for this drug and his hate for it because he knew there was a strong life, but he could not go a single day without it. He had great potential to do great things. He loved animals, his niece, his nephew, his mother, and his sister, more than life itself. His life mattered, and because of kratom, he's, um, he's lost us forever. There's no winning this battle for my family because we've already lost. But no other family should have to go through this horrible experience, this hell on earth that we went through. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So you just heard from a member of a Jones County, uh, citizen who lost his life to kratom and now want to present to you some of her demand to, is in a battle ongoing, who her husband is now currently addicted to this.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hope does. My motion. My name is Aunt Mint. You know, I've lived in Jones County all my life. I'm a wife, a mother, you're a grandmother. Until about two years ago, I truly thought I was the only person watching kratom, something you can walk into a gas station or vape shop, and it destroyed my husband's life. I'm here today to beg you, please ban kratom in our county. To please follow other cities and counties in Mississippi. My husband is a recovering drug addict. He would do any drug that he get his hands on, meth, Xanax, heroin, you name it, he's done it. In 2017, I sent him to rehab and truly thought we were done with drugs. But little did I know, after coming home from rehab, he was introduced to kratom. At first, it was pills and then powder, and now, as of today, it's the liquid, Vicodin, and shots. Advertises of feel-good relief. I started to notice that he would give me bill money on a Friday, and by Monday, he'd need money back. I kept finding bottles of kratom hid all over our property. The next thing I know, I'm getting a phone call, he's been arrested for stealing kratom. That was a real wake-up call for me, that something was not right about this. How can someone be so desperate for something at a gas station that he's stealing it? I started to research, and sure enough, it affects brains like opiates, and it can be addictive. It binds to the same receptors in the brain as other opioids. Right then, I knew we were in trouble all over again. The lines, the sneaking, the irritability, the night sweats, the body jerks, the diarrhea. It was all from kratom when he was trying to stop taking it. We ended up getting a divorce mainly because of the addiction to kratom in 2021. His aggressive behavior, the absolute financial bind, and just watching the person he loved go right back to addiction. We have reconciled since, but it's still an issue. There have been periods of times that he goes without it, but it doesn't last long. I have texts, I have texts, and I have printed out to show you how he says this is the hardest thing I've had to do. He has told me so many times that kratom is harder than any drug he has ever quit. Christmas Eve this past year, I had to call ambulance because he was hallucinating and turning purple. At first, I thought, here we go, he's on Xanax, because it all always comes full circle with any of these drugs. They take one to help with the other and another to stop that one. He was falling and hitting his head and his face, and he couldn't keep himself upright. The paramedics come in, and of course, they ask what he's taking, and I say, it has, it has to be Xanax because of his behavior. Then she looked at his pupils and she said, that's not it. Has he been drinking? I was like, no, believe it or not, he's not a drinker. His lips and hands were purple and said we needed to get him to the hospital. Once we got to the hospital, they worked on him and finally got him stable. They came to tell me they were putting him in ICU that he was on a ventilator. I asked the doctor what was in his system because I knew it had to be pills, heroin, or doc, Vic, and all. The doctor told me he had nothing but small traces of THC in his system and proceeded to tell me that he was a doctor in Alabama at once, and they saw this type of behavior and overdoses on synthetic, over-the-counter things. And I instantly said, oh my God, kratom. And he said, does he take kratom? And I said, yes, it's the daily battle in our house. So I have also brought you all the pictures of him on the ventilator. I'm here five for our husband's life. He, he, he may not be much to anyone, but he means everything to me, our children, his parents, siblings, and now we have a grandbaby. All the time, if it wasn't right there at every turn, it would help me so much. He has really been trying to stay away from it since Christmas and has had some success, but he has taken it on several occasions. It's the battle every day, and we're just asking for your help, along with many others who have found themselves addicted to this gas station heroin. Anyone who I have talked to has successfully, that has successfully gotten off kratom will tell you it is so addictive and the worst thing that they have ever had to stop. And anyone who tells you they must have it, it's because they're addicted to it. And I'll leave you with this. I texted my husband this morning, and he's in Alabama working. Thank God, because it's illegal there, so I don't have to worry about it. And I said, there was one thing that you could say today to the board. What would you say? And he said, please ban kratom. It has ruined my life. I'm trying so hard to recover and fill my life back. It has been worse than any drug that you could ever put your hands on, and it's been harder than anything I've ever had to quit. It needs to be on the same level as heroin and pentenol. Thank you for your time today, and I pray that you take a stand and help us in this in our county today. And I'll have the pictures if y'all would like me to have some around. This is just a small amount. And I will say this, this is the message where I have posted on Facebook before about kratom, and it got shared on Facebook, and a random lady messaged me, and this was her statement about it. Maybe you want to take a quick look at it.
Yeah, thank you for your time this morning. I greatly appreciate it, um, as a member of the Coalition and more specifically a member of the State Advisory Board for all treatment courts in the state of Mississippi. The Coalition is committed to continue to provide assistance. Thank God, we still have the power to do something about it here today in our county. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Robert Pattenosber?
Yes, sir. I'm really sorry to hear what y'all went through with your family members, and I'm happy to say that our legislators have banned the extracts. The only thing that's still legal is the powder, but the extracts are gone as of June the first.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Robert Pattenosber. I'm a homeowner, a taxpayer, and a lifelong resident of Jones County. Like many here, I work hard, take care of my responsibilities, and want to see this county thrive. Today, I'm asking you to look beyond fear and make a decision to truly serve the people of this community. I'm asking you not to ban kratom, but to take a smarter, more responsible approach that protects consumers while keeping our community safe. that protects consumers while keeping our community safe. This is personal. For the past 10 years, I've used kratom. It has helped me live a healthier life, stay productive, and remain an active, law-abiding member of this county. But this isn't just about me. This is about the mother of three who uses kratom to manage pain so she can keep up with her kids, the veteran who relies on this instead of prescription pain pills to cope with injuries in service, the man, the man recovering from addiction who found a way to stay clean. These people live here. They shop at the same stores as you, they go to church with you, and they are terrified as today. In one decision, you could turn them into criminals for choosing a natural plant over pharmaceuticals or alcohol. The truth about kratom and public safety, there's a lot of fear surrounding kratom, but let's look at the facts. Kratom is not an opioid. It only partially interacts with opioid receptors, meaning it does not cause deadly overdoses like fentanyl or prescription opioids. Research from institutions like University of Florida and National Institute of Health shows kratom is a safer alternative to opioids, alcohol, and stimulants, which Ms. Ashley I sent her to. The real problem with kratom itself is unregulated synthetic extracts and adulterated products. That's why this legislative session, both the Mississippi House and Senate, voted unanimously to pass a bill that allows consumers 21 and older to access only non-synthetic regulated kratom, and it was just handed to law Friday. That wasn't a controversial decision. It was a unanimous vote from lawmakers across the state, across party lines, who took the time to study the issue and find a responsible path for the choice before you. Banning kratom will make the county safer. It will push law-abiding citizens into the shadows, criminalize good people, and take away personal choice. History has shown us that prohibition doesn't work. It creates black markets, makes substances more dangerous, and forces people to take risks they shouldn't have to take. If you ban kratom, you won't be stopping its use. You'll just be making it harder and more dangerous for the people who rely on it. If you have a better choice, Jones County can lead the way. Instead of a ban, we can follow the same responsible approach that Mississippi lawmakers just supported unanimously, ensuring kratom is only sold in 21 and over establishments, banning dangerous synthetics, and protecting the people who depend on it. My final thought, there are people in this county, people you know, who will be devastated if you take this choice away from them. You may not see them now, but I promise you, they are watching this decision very closely. Please don't take away something that helped so many people. Let's be leaders, let's be responsible, let's do what's right. I would also like to add that Wayne County dismissed their attempt to ban last week. They're going to follow House Bill 1077. Thank you.
Mr. Governor, I know we sit for 10 o'clock. Would you, would you allow us about five minutes?
Absolutely.
Just finish these two?
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have Mr. Steve McElwain.
Thanks, sir. Steve McElwain, I've lived here for 21 years, and I have personal knowledge of most of what's been said this morning, and I'm eluded by the stories. Anybody should be. I personally knew Matt. Phenomenal guy, one of the finest human beings that ever walked the earth, and tremendous potential, but to me, with what has happened, just kind of condense this because I know we're on a timeline. Without trying to sound smart or name these big names, there's a chemical called 7OH, and the state of Mississippi, the national level, everybody that has studied this, including UCLA, Harvard, and major universities, has isolated it as the problem. And it is in products that are in Jones County. There's no two ways around it, and it is a problem. Now that the state of Mississippi has passed something, finally, it does have teeth in it. It's not perfect, but it has enough teeth in it for law enforcement to remove the products that do have this. It is, many, many have stated in the reports and the studies that it is as dangerous as heroin or anything else, fentanyl, you name it. I mean, it is a nasty chemical, but kratom that has helped so many people, myself included, I don't have to rely on prescription medicines or anything. I've got two family members and a few friends. It's not something that you commonly talk about because, you know, if it works, you take it, you go on about your business. But I'm quite well acquainted with addicts, and because of family, just to be honest. I'm not saying you can't believe everything an addict tells you, but you can't believe everything an addict tells you. And if an addict wants to get high, they're going to find a way, regardless of what's on the shelves or not on the shelves. But the powder that I'm referring to, and it's commonly referred to as pure, unadulterated kratom, and the reason is, is because of that 7OH. It is nasty. It's nasty stuff. Anything that's in a bottle that's mixed, they're selling stuff that's mixed with codine. Who knows what else, because it's not regulated. Now, law enforcement has the ability to go into these stores, get it off the shelf, give them 30 days or whatever law wants to do. I'm not creative enough with processes, but I know that that chemical, the guidelines state that it has to be less than 1%. I have some of this, and it states on the bag, less than 0.1%. I never even paid that much attention, to be honest with you. I had had some other stuff that you can go in and buy, and it was powerful. I mean, it was like, there's no doubt you would have all of the symptoms that have been mentioned this morning, but like prescription painkillers and medicines, they just don't work, but so long. And after you've taken a little while, you gotta up with those or, or stop it or find something different. The kratom, it's amazing that we're actually on the same side of things, a lot more than people realize. A local leader in the community, pastor, was telling me that if I stopped any law enforcement officer in this county, and I asked him, what was the number one problem of our youth in this county? He said, they wouldn't blame you. They'd tell you it's kratom. So I took it as a challenge, and I don't know a lot of law enforcement, but the three that I do know, I called them, and I didn't set it up as a trap. I was sincere. I wanted to know the answer to this. Every single one of them said vape products and additives that are added to the vape, something I already knew, but it's an emotionally charged topic. I've lived with the fear a long portion of my life of someone relapsing and knowing that that would end up a funeral. I've lost people. It did affect me when Matt passed, even though we weren't in constant contact. I had a Super Bowl party near by every year, and that's how I met him. He showed up, and everybody loved the guy, and, you know, he made a positive impact in a lot of ways. But these deaths from kratom have one thing in common, and it's polysubstances. If you look on the coroner's report, you're going to be hard pressed to find very few that will say kratom specifically was caused, because an addict is trying to fill a void, and they're taking heroin and many other things that are in there. And I started studying this because I'm, I mean, I don't want to take anything that's going to affect my health. I'm 54 years old, and, you know, I don't, I won't live long enough to have a, a bad reputation, you know? If you screw that up, you're toast, you know, for a lot of people. That's not true in every case, and especially in cases like these people that are turning their lives around. I commend them. I do, because the work behind it is brutal. But it's literally a case of throwing the vape down with the bad water to ban kratom. Example and point would be in 2014, the state of Alabama banned kratom. And this is something that anybody can look up, you know, unfortunately, I didn't come up with papers and documents and stuff like that, but in 2015, overdose deaths doubled. Fentanyl, heroin, okay? For that to be the case, they weren't, they weren't really taking the standard kratom. They were taking all this this morning. I did a quick query online, and it was